Okay, this meeting in New York School Board will come to order. So if we please stand and wish our allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving very along. We have the approval of the minutes for the June 4th meeting. Denise?
I'll make a motion to approve the June 4th minutes.
Approved by Denise Day, seconded by Al. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Kenny?
The part where we're revising the minutes from the May 21st, I don't know if it's clear in the revision where we're talking about the Maharamit policy to abstain from the pledge of allegiance, and maybe that's just wording, but I think it might be better if the word "and" is added between pledge and should in the last line.
Could you maybe just read how it should be represented?
So it felt it is inappropriate that the Maharamit students need to make arrangements with the principal if they would like to abstain from the pledge, and this should be stricken from the handbook. I think that's the way it should be.
So adding the word "and"?
And this.
Yeah.
And, and this after pledge. And then, one more, and it was at the...
So that one's clear?
Yeah.
Okay.
In the closing actions where it says that I asked about the transition progress for incoming Barrington students, it was really the transition process, and it was really focused not on what we're doing here when the students arrive as ninth graders, but if there's anything that more aligns their middle school with our middle school. That's was the gist of what I was trying to get at.
Can you say the exact wording that you want?
So maybe to ask about the transition process for incoming Barrington students and in specific alignment of curriculum.
Okay. Are there corrections? Changes? Tara?
When it talks about the administrators that were present, Carolyn's name is not there.
Thank you.
Other corrections? Okay, could we have a vote on the minutes as corrected? All those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, the student rep voting in favor. Okay, announcements and commendations, district?
A couple. One, I want to announce, Megan will bring it up herself, but we have a New England champion.
(applause) Megan won the 800-meter run at the New England Championships this past weekend. It's a pretty remarkable thing. I mean, obviously, she's a very, very accomplished runner, but being a New England champion is not something that every runner gets a chance to say, so congratulations to Megan.
Thank you.
And that same note, we also had another exceptional performance as well. One of her teammate Dominique Twombly came in second in New England's in the 100 and third in the 200. And again, she's a sophomore, both sophomores actually, so there's most of the kids that they're racing against are juniors and seniors, so great things to come from our track program coming up, especially once we get our own track.[250.12][250.12](laughter) I also wanted to just comment, this past Friday night was graduation. It was, you know, in my opinion, it went extremely well. As many people are aware, weather was a concern right up until the end. It's one of the dangers in having an outdoor graduation in spite of the tent. Obviously, there's other issues you have to weigh into, and one of the things that probably people didn't see was that because there was projected thunderstorms and lightning, I had to turn to the facilities department and say, hey, guys, we need a backup plan. And I just wanted to take a minute to recognize that the facilities workers who, without blinking an eye, said, okay, great, we'll set up the gym and we'll be ready just in case you need it. And then, as soon as they finished setting it up, I said, I guess we don't need it, guys.[302.83][302.83](laughter) And they didn't get mad at me, and they said, you know, we understand, you have to do what you have to. But I just wanted to mention Ken Kilar, Mike Nolett, Daryl Breton, Patrick St. Ange, Jamie Peget, I'll give you this list if you want. Jamie Peget, Chris Severance, Jeremy French, Merrick Phillip, Kirk Marshall, Paul Mundu, Paul Byron, Ben Ball, Mike McGinnis, Barb Dursa, Dennis Ferland, and our own Alexander Taylor in the back here also set up the audio outside, and then when I went to him and said, gee, you know, how hard would it be if we had to at the last minute? And he had a plan, he was ready to go. So I think it's important to realize that graduation went very smoothly out there, you know, people had a good time, but there was a heck of a lot of work that went on behind it that maybe doesn't get commended, and I just wanted to make sure everybody understood the incredible effort. Not to mention the fact that there were a number of these people who ended up staying overnight to guard the tent, because, you know, once we set the tent up, you have to watch out for all the equipment that's set under there, so we had like 24-hour coverage to make sure that the tent wasn't tampered with or technology damaged or things of that sort. So thank you to all those guys, and also, obviously, Jim Rozicky for his work on that. Couldn't have done it without them. So anyway, thank you very much.
Carolyn Eastman, Assistant Superintendent. I wanted to acknowledge our first Oyster River Cooperative School District Community Celebration Picnic that happened this past Saturday under the graduation tent. I want to also, we raised $995 that day. We had many wonderful food donations as well, and I wanted to thank Alexander Taylor for helping out with all the PA system bands that donated their time, One Free Pancake, Jam Patrol, Fling. I wanted to thank Maximum Velocity, which is a stunt, they're out of Lee, they did a fantastic job. I also wanted to thank our N68 Community Committee, which is made up of Maria Barth, Krista Butts, Ann Welsh, Debbie Jarvis, Renee Bonnata, Wing Graves Moody, Sharon Meeker, Barb Nadori, and I hope I'm not leaving anyone out, I think I captured everyone. But what a collaboration, Food Service did an excellent job. We christened the brand-new grill, (laughter) which worked great, it was fantastic, and so for a first time out, I really want to thank everyone for a really nice start to something that I think is only going to grow. So, thanks you to every, thank you to everyone.
Thank you.
Good evening, Carrie Vash from Mastway. We've also been very busy at our school, we've had a number of different activities going on. Last Friday, we celebrated with our traditional fourth-grade breakfast. It was a fun-filled morning with lovely treats from, for everyone, for families of graduating fourth graders, which was wonderful to see. They did have a field trip planned afterwards. We actually postponed that to Monday due to weather. It was probably the only thing we had to switch, which was great so far. This week, we've had a number of different things. Pam Felber, our music teacher, held three separate three-peat operas with our first-grade students, and they did a fantastic job. Yesterday, we also had Field Day, led by Kathy Baker. It was an amazing morning of the school, and then we also used the grill and had a barbecue afterwards with all the kids eating outside, so it was a blast. Today and tomorrow, we had, today we had our first showing of our expression sessions where kids get up for two minutes chunks of time and show their talents, and it ranges from electric guitars to hula hooping. So it was really fun, and we'll continue that tomorrow. And it's a busy time, but I really hope everyone has a wonderful summer, safe summer, and we look forward to being back in the fall. Thank you.
Very.
We have our fourth-grade recognition ceremony tomorrow night down the hall because of construction. Construction is really going smoothly. I'm not going to repeat all the things that Carrie just mentioned, but we had similar events over the course of the last week, and I want to thank the board for the support they've given to all the schools throughout the year, beginning with the budget and every other minute that you spend perusing what we do and listening to what we have to say.
Thank you, Dennis. Other district? Comments, board comments, commendations and announcements? Tara?
I'd like to thank all the principals for their time when they so kindly gave me tours of all the building, Carrie, I don't need one of yours, but Carrie gives me lots of time otherwise. So thank you so much, because not only was it great to see the facilities, but just to get to speak to you on a one-on-one and hear what's going on in your building and some of your thoughts was really, the time was very appreciated. Thank you.
Tara?
I just want to congratulate everyone in fourth grade moving up to middle school and everyone in middle school moving up to the high school and graduation. High school was a wonderful event. As Echo and Todd, I think it went perfectly and was kind of neat under the tent, it was like you were camping out, you heard the rain come pouring down, and we were dry, and the speakers were animated and bright, and it was just very touching. It was a great, great closing, I think, to those 13 years, if many of them were at Oyster River. And I thank all the teachers and all the auxiliary staff involved and the principals who got those kids to the finish line. I commend all of you.
I'd just like to say, Dave Irvin in the middle school, I may have the name of the name wrong, Studio and Jazz Band, whatever, but it was fantastic, the company that took Safety Last, the Harold Lloyd film, and then just the present, the performances after that were just absolutely stunning, and you begin to see, first you see them as maybe middle schoolers, but within about five minutes, you just see them as pros. It was just absolutely great to watch, so congratulations to all of them. I think it must have been just a thrilling moment for certainly the audience, and for them, I think it's a moment of an after, an evening they'll just remember for the rest of their lives. So we're so proud to have that as part of our, of our school system.
Others? Okay, district reports, is there a report from the Assistant Superintendent?
Carolyn Eastman, Assistant Superintendent. I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that this Friday, June 20th, Progress Reports, the portal will be open at 4 o'clock for parents to look at Progress Reports. We have sent an email out letting parents know if they would like to request printed copies, we can make that accommodation as well, no problem. There'll also be some resources sent out to help parents access Progress Reports, as well as support the following week. We know, recognize the schools will be closed, but we'll provide support at the SAU office. Also, I wanted to commend staff. We sent every year, well, this being the second year, we've been sending out summer proposals, requests for summer ideas on innovation and collaborative work, and this year, this summer, we have 77 staff in some way, shape, or form participating in some type of summer work, which is incredible. The proposals that came in were just so thoughtful, and the impact and benefit to students is going to be tremendous, so I'm really, I'm really thrilled with that. And I just wanted to let the board know, leadership team is meeting next week to start to set priorities for the following year and meet about strategic plans, so we'll be doing that next Wednesday and Thursday. So, thank you.
Sue?
I just wanted to piggyback on Carolyn's comments related to this project.
I'm sorry.
Strategic planning, Sue led another group of the operations today, and we are now beginning to take the broad goals and turn them into more specific goals and action strategies. So the work that Sue's Operations Division, Finance and Custodial and Food Service, that work is on target to be brought in front of you for August. And as Carolyn noted, we are, continue to work on the academic side of things, and the principals have got their broad guidelines done, and that work is on target to bring to you in September. Wait, that'll be the second meeting in September. So we'll have that draft work ready in time for the upcoming budget season, so we'll be tying the whole strategic plan into the budget for the first time. So we're, the staff is doing really great work, and it's been very participatory and very broad participation by staff, and very, very positive experience. So we are planning on being ready for you in December and fall.
Great. Yes, Sue, I'm sorry.
The latest budget update, right on track, just about finishing up the year, and it looks like fund balance is going to be enough so that we can fund what you've already approved at this point. Revenues are ahead of the game, too, so things are good. Actually, I compared it to last year, and it's pretty much comparable to last year, so another successful budget year.
Good.
Questions?
I have a question. And I see how the numbers, particularly maybe for salaries, and it came out, you know, 99.5%, which is just, you know, probably couldn't hit it any sweeter, but within individual ones, there are variance.
Pluses and minuses.
Right, and, you know, so is that something, and my ignorance, is that something to be expected, and is it something that we use to inform planning for next year?
Yeah, both, a little bit of both. So for instance, in the teacher's side, you remember we added a few positions at the end of, at the end of the game, so we didn't have those budgeted, so you would see that. One of the other areas, I think bus drivers, in our conversation when we were budgeting, we didn't accurately budget for bus drivers, so you'll see that over, so. And then, and again, this is before we finish up our final payroll, so these numbers will change. I'll bring you a June 30th, so it may look very different, but you're right, this gives us an idea of when we move to the next year, where we maybe didn't hit the mark and how we want to plan ahead. So, and I'm always really adamant to everyone that if you have money left in another account, I'd rather you didn't spend it out of the account you have money out of, I want you to spend it where it truly needs to be spent, so we can accurately reflect what we need in the budget, so that we can plan ahead for the next year to be on target as much as we can, so.
Kenny, that's pretty typical, because we run a bottom-line budget, we balance the budget at the bottom, and so you'll find variances, pluses and minuses through accounts.
Right. Perfect. And it's amazing how right on you are with it. Could be a lot of credit for that.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks.
Sue?
So when you say we're about where we are with last year, we also have on, you know, to be decided tonight, two other poss, another possible project. So, you know, there might be between something like $40,000 or $57,000. So if we would go ahead with one of those, we would still be returning kind of where we were last year? Is that including that?
At this point, yeah, that's including that, and again, I just ask you that, you know, you said, in the event that we have that money, if something unforeseen happens that I'm not aware of, I don't anticipate that, we have that ability to say, well, we're not going to do that. And I've already talked with Jim Rozicky about a couple of items on his list, you know, if we can't do that, that's okay, you know, I'll just budget for next year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Great, thanks.
Thanks. Student Center report?
So this afternoon, the incoming freshmen came to the high school, and members of the National Honor Society gave them tours, and they were able to answer questions that the students had and kind of prepare them for the transition into high school, and they also voted for their class officers today, so.
Okay, we have the summary of the Oyster River High School Alumni Survey results. Todd?
You may recall, last year, after a lot of, actually, we back up, there's been a lot of discussion over the years of trying to make sure we collect data on our graduates to be able to utilize that to, you know, to plan programs and to determine whether we're successfully meeting the needs of our students. Last year, the board, at the end of last school year, the board authorized us to conduct an alumni survey. We hired a company called Futuristics Research out of Pennsylvania. They actually have done, they've done some survey work for Oyster River High School in the past. I discovered that in 2007, they did a similar, a similar survey. We selected two classes to survey, the class of 2009 and 2012. The reason we picked those two classes, the class of 2009 would have been at the point of graduating from college or around that point, so it seemed logical to say, okay, that might give us an indication of how successful they were throughout their college experience, and obviously, the class 2012 would have been just far enough along in their first year out of high school that their experiences in that transition would be useful in trying to do that. Every member of both classes was reached out to. We were able to confirm that out of the total 327 between those two classes, 305 were actually contacted and asked to do the survey. We were able to get about 25% return rate, which is statistically pretty, pretty good. The class 2012, we had a higher return rate than we did on the class 2009. So anyway, I was asked to summarize the data of this. I would like to tell you that the entire report is 149 pages long. It's a very detailed report. It's been, it's already been shared with my staff in looking at very specific things like within each program, how kids saw. What I'm going to summarize for you are some of the broad, the broad trends, but certainly, I'd be happy to give you the entire survey. In fact, I've already shared it with Dr. Morrison and Wendy, and they can, they can certainly give it to you, and you can peruse the entire survey. This first slide I want to share with you actually is not from the survey, but it just gives you a breakdown over the last five years of our graduates. Clearly, the class 2014 just graduated last Friday, so we don't have this data on them yet. There was kind of a neat piece, by the way, on OR TV News this most recent month, just asking kids, what are you doing after high school? And it's kind of a neat, I would point out, I have gotten some feedback on that, that's a very narrow, narrow sample, you know, it seemed like there was disproportionate number of kids who hadn't decided yet or are going to do a gap year. It was a function of who was in senior corps the day they brought the video camera down there, so it's not necessarily a sample. My guess is when we get down to it, class 2014 will be somewhere in the same ballpark that we're seeing here. But as you can see, typically, our graduates, about 70% of them go on to a four-year college, you know, somewhere between, you know, 8 and 15% go to a one-, two-, or three-year college, you know, 12 to 15, 16% typically go to the workforce of the military, and then there's kind of a growing group that seems to be more and more popular amongst our students, which is taking a gap year. That last year, 2013, was the first time it actually showed up as a number that you could say there's actually a percentage, so a 2% of that reflected, I think, three students. It looks like that number's going to go up in this year's classes, more kids who are contemplating that, that notion. So anyway, this is, that data is just data that we collect, and I just want to give you a profile of the information we have. So anyway, this, the survey data. Basically, the way the survey was structured, there's a whole series of questions, and student, and graduates were asked to compare themselves to other students in their classes, not just Oyster River students, but just how do you stand, stack up against them. One of the first questions asked was, you know, in terms of how prepared do you feel? Overall preparation for just college in general compared to your classmates. As you can see, class 2012 felt that they were better prepared at a higher rate than the class of 2009, however, in general, our graduates reported that they felt better prepared than their, than their college classmates. So if you, if you certainly look at the column of better prepared and combine it with prepared the same, you know, overall, that's 97.3% of the graduates felt they were at least as good, if not better, prepared than their college classmates. So certainly, I think that's a general statement. In terms of specific skills, in terms of whether our graduates felt they were prepared for college-level reading, on an overall scale, 88.9% felt it, but clearly, class of 2009 felt they were better prepared than the class of 2012 in that category. But again, a very high percentage of our students feel that they were ready for college-level reading. In terms of college-level math, this is one that, I'll be honest with you, given some of the conversations we've had in the community about, you know, some of the data, other data that we have, this is actually one of the areas of greatest levels of satisfaction of our, our students reporting that they really felt very good about their math preparation. So obviously, there is going to be a lot of conversation around our math program moving forward, but, you know, looking at the end product, our college students that are Oyster River graduates certainly are reporting that they really feel that they were very well-prepared math-wise. Terms of college-level writing, I think we've always known that we have a very strong writing program, you know, and that's, that's been true from kindergarten all the way up through, but a very high percentage of our students, 84.7% overall, but, you know, so basically 85% of our students felt that they were prepared for the level of rigor in the writing program that they faced when they got to college. They were then asked, you know, in terms of preparation for college-level technology skills, again, a very high rate of satisfaction, I guess you could say, and feeling prepared for what they were asked to do, 86.1% overall. Again, the class of 2012 felt more prepared than the class of 2009, but again, there's still a very high rate of satisfaction with, with that level of skill heading into college. World language skills, and clearly, our program, we have only Spanish and French as our, as our world language program, so for the most part, students who are going on in world language would be in those two languages, however, a very high percentage of our kids walked out of Oyster River feeling that their world language preparation was very strong. 82.6% felt very, felt prepared overall. Again, class 2012 was marginally feeling more prepared. College-level research skills, you can definitely see, in this case, that you definitely see a difference in the, between the class of 2009 and class 2012, so it's clear that the class 2012 felt that they had much more of a wide-ranging preparation for research at the college level. I'm, you know, theorizing, but I mean, technology has found much more of a role in, in our library and in the programs that we have over the last five years, and I'm guessing that that plays a big role in it, real focusing on that, that sort of technological literacy component, so I think that's probably a significant piece there. But again, high level of satisfaction. Oral presentation skills, you know, again, our graduates definitely reported a very high level of satisfaction with their preparation for that. I think that's, you know, clearly, our program is very rich in student-centered kind of activities, and so speaking, and performing, and presenting is a very big and continuing part of our program, and I think that's, clearly shows that. Again, the class of 2012 felt, you know, more prepared in that vein than, than others, than the class 2009 did. And that's sort of just a quick overview. I would be happy to answer any specific questions you might have about the survey, and again, like I said, it's 149 pages, I'd be happy to give you the survey, and you can peruse it to leisure as well. Yes?
Just a, I guess, questions, observations?
Sure.
So the math thing that you pointed out really stood out to me, where in many of the other categories, it was kind of like an 82-18 split.
Sure.
Between prepared, not prepared. Math was like 91-9.
Sure.
And probably I should read the report, but it would seem that breaking down the interest of the college-level student, and really, what was really appropriate is, so if a student is pursuing math-science, are they prepared in math-science?
Right.
So if someone who has no interest in math and just using math, and they're going to college, and it's like, maybe they have to take gen, you know...
Yeah, and actually, the survey, it's very detailed. The survey actually goes through and gives you the names and majors and everything of every single student who responded, so you definitely can, can glean that from the survey. I mean, there's no question that there is a differential in students who had sort of a math-science, you know, focus in high school versus those that did not, so I think that's, you know, as we talk about improving our math program, I think it's, it's not the student that's aspiring to AP Calculus or AP Stats that we're really trying to engage and keep them engaged in mathematics, it's students that maybe are struggling possibly or just are aspiring to college but not necessarily in a math-science direction, and those are the students that...
And maybe shying away from that because they're struggling when, if that, if the key is found.
Sure.
Yep. Couple more things. There was a percentage in the teens' military workforce. Were there questions geared whether school prepared them this...
Yes, the, the struggle with any survey is you need to get enough of a sample of responses to be able to say it means something, and when we did, the reason it's very college-focused is that the percentage of students responding that were not taking that fairly, the college route, just didn't respond at a very high rate. I think we had six non-college aspirant students respond, and so it's very difficult to draw conclusions from that. So...
Two more things. So we're hearing how mostly college students are feeling comparing them to their peers now at college. Is there any data where, how Oyster River kids feel compared to kids coming from other school districts and maybe other districts that we would like to really measure up against?
One of, one of the things we can do would be, we could, we could ask for this in... One of the things we can do would be, we could ask for this analysis from the survey company, but they can do, take the same questions that we've asked our graduates and give us that comparison to other like-high schools in the region, in the country, and give us that comparison. So, but we didn't, haven't done that yet, but it's certainly something we could ask them to do. I would point out that the, to kind of bring it back to the Oyster River focus, as I mentioned, the survey is one hundred and forty-nine pages long. There's lots of very specific questions about, you know, classroom styles and the types of projects that engage, those kind of things. There's a lot more specificity, and so certainly, like, we're talking about math, my math department has seen sort of the range of answers that were given within, for very specific things in terms of the instructional style and all of those things, and the level of satisfaction. And the respondents were asked to rate on a one-to-five scale for various things to give us that indication. Typically, in most categories, when it, we're in the three-and-a-half-ish range, which is towards the high end of satisfaction in most areas. Again, I do think there's, you know, this is very good data from the standpoint of understanding how our college aspirant students are feeling about their preparation once they're in college. I don't think we can necessarily take this and say, okay, this tells us everything we need to know about our graduates and whether they're prepared. I look at it, and I feel very good about what I'm seeing. I mean, anecdotally, I knew this already because our graduates come back all the time and say, hey, I just took that AP, I took calculus in college, and AP really helped me, I'm there. So we hear that all the time, but to see it in a statistical manner does give us that, okay, there is a general level of satisfaction, so we're doing something right. So what we need to do is kind of zero in on what are the things we need to do to make our program better for the changing population of students we have. And I think that's something that we also have to look at, is the demographic of our student population. I know you've certainly heard, you know, Carolyn talking a great deal about, you know, the N sixty-eight hunger issue and socioeconomic diversity that's more and more present in our community, and those issues do play out in access to experiences in school and success. And so the more, we need to flesh that out more.
And the last thing, just, and just the, after the afternoon in the sociology class and listening to students and their affirmation, they felt very well academically prepared but very insecure about sort of the life skills that you need when you're launched. So I think we shouldn't lose sight, it's, I mean, I think we need the academic, but we shouldn't also lose sight of how we might help kids feel that pieces together.
Absolutely. I mean, the non-knowledge-based skills. I mean, certainly, the survey was structured around sort of the broader concepts coming out of the common core and not, so like, looking at things like oral presentation and written skills and that kind of thing. So it's not very specific to a singular academic area, it's more broad, general skills for success, yes, in college, but in life as well. But you're right, I mean, we do have to balance that.
Good. Thanks, Todd. Denise?
I actually just put my hands on the survey because my son was one of the students that took it, so I knew I had it somewhere, and I found it just before the meeting, or I would have actually emailed you this ahead of time. The one question that, and I don't know if you remember this, but that I would really be curious about is the current educational status in terms of the number of students who, because there's options for dropped out of college, or, you know, completed post-graduate gap year after high school, you know, kind of where they are now kind of thing. And do you remember, like, what percent or numbers that said that they had, because that would be interesting to hear, is that, okay, they've gone to college, they feel prepared, but were there, you know, a significant number that dropped out of college? And of course, the survey doesn't ask for what reason, it could be a lot of different reasons, could be financial or what have you, but I just was curious if you remember anything about that question.
Right. I mean, I think, as you would expect, I think students that feel less satisfied with how their post-high school academic life went tended to be less inclined to do the survey.
Yeah.
So I think that's, that's part of the, so the students who did the survey, you know, there were a percentage of students that transferred, I think, you know, the Oyster River boomerang effect, you know, kids who leave for a year and then come back and go to UNH because they realize, wow, that actually is a pretty great place here. That's certainly clear in the data. But there wasn't an overwhelming trend of kids dropping out of school or anything along that side. It is interesting, though, that it does literally give a list of every student by name and the college they went to, and you can actually go through and look at individual choices and their questions about when they made the choice to do what they're doing, whether or not it's, you know, was based on a vocational choice, or whether it was something that they had personal interest in, or, it's interesting to look at, although it's hard to establish a trend in it.
Actually, Denise kind of grabbed part of my question, because my question was about, you hear a lot about kids transferring, and I don't remember back when I was in college long ago that anyone seemed to transfer. Is it like a more recent phenomenon, not just boomeranging back to UNH, but transferring to other colleges? And I'm wondering, like, if that is a phenomenon that's occurring that we're in guidance, they're saying, like, you know, there is this phenomenon, you may transfer, I mean, is that...
Well, I do think, you know, that there's an economic reality to a lot of it, too. I mean, students, you know, go to college, and a lot of times, they'll make a decision about where they're going to go based upon, you know, their dream vision of where they're going to be, and then when the student loans start to pile up, they realize, you know, there actually is a cheaper option in my backyard. So I do think that's, that's an economic reality. I also think that it's, you know, the notion of the traditional, you know, from your and my generation, of the traditional four, go to college and do it in four years, that's a lot smaller of a percentage. I, you know, I haven't seen recent data, but it was, it's like, maybe forty percent of college students actually go to college and complete it in a four-year time span. I mean, it's pretty typical that it gets strung out over a longer period of time, and I guess you'd call it a non-traditional route, but because sixty percent of them are doing, I guess it's actually the traditional route now, it's kind of moved around a bit. So yeah, I mean, you know, it's just, I think our students are certainly more aware of options, so if they go somewhere and they're dissatisfied, they know there's someplace else to turn to and to go to. So in the end, I guess it's, do they finish college? And I think a high percentage of them do.
I have one more, too, it's like, maybe on the council, but I thought it was really interesting where you had where, like, this current class, where they had been accepted. I really like that because it kind of shows, like, did we stay more locally in New England, or do we really spread to the wind? It's just, as a general interest thing, it's really interesting to look at that.
Yeah, we will have that data for this class, but certainly, if you look at the school profile that we put out lists every college that our students have been accepted to, I mean, last year, there were four hundred colleges that our students got accepted to. Obviously, we only had a hundred and fifty-something graduates, so they didn't go to them all, but there's quite a range of colleges to be accepted, accepted at. And I do think, you know, just to piggyback onto what you're saying, too, I think one of the things that I hear from people in the community is, you know, why aren't more of our graduates going to elite colleges like, you know, MIT and Harvard and some, you know, the Ivies? And on the assumption that that's the only measure of their success. And I think we are seeing our kids get into lots of schools, but they are making choices based on the economic reality of what they're dealing with. And so with some of our top graduates, I mean, UNH is a wonderful school, and so I think our graduates choose that, so we tend to, as a community, go, oh, they're going to UNH, as though that's not a great thing, but, you know, to get into your, one of your top state universities in your state is pretty impressive. But you're right, yeah, we get into four hundred, I'm sure there'll be at least that many this year, ranging from, you know, all of the state universities, you've got students going to Northeastern and BU and Bates and Colby and, you know, a number of very, very prestigious schools, although, like I say, the OR TV segment only showed the kids who were there that day, so you didn't get the full range.
So it's all right. A take-home for you as far as, you know, your direction or how you're going to sort of use this data to change how things have done at school? I mean, it's interesting to see the comparison, but, you know, you're talking seniors or juniors versus freshmen, which is different as well, the experience and things like that.
I mean, certainly, as I said, the specific data about individual programs, I think that's where we will go to and focus on that. I think the general sense is our graduates are generally well-prepared for post-high school life, but I mean, looking at specific areas such as, like, discussing our math program, or our English program, or our music program, there's some very particular feedback there about aspects that they were either satisfied with or less satisfied with, and, you know, we can do some relative comparing there, and that would be probably where we'll focus our energies in terms of, okay, what are we going to do moving forward? And like I said, I mean, with the changes in the music program, I think you'll see that there's a lot of things that are happening in that that are addressing some of the frustrations, I guess you could say, that kids had expressed previous. Just like, I think, as we talk about our math program, a number of those issues will be addressed there as well.
Just in terms of going, following Ed's question, so you're building your component of the strategic plan.
Sure.
And you are about to go back into accreditation.
Yeah.
Do you find this report useful for both of those endeavors?
Absolutely. I mean, certainly, from the standpoint, I mean, one of the things we have to do as we look at accreditation, we have to provide evidence of the different things that we're looking at, and certainly, this is data that we can use to substantiate the fact that our graduates are achieving those skills and are being successful. In terms of, I mean, the strategic plan work that we're doing, certainly, we're going to be focusing a lot of our time on NIASC-related standards, and I think that's, that there's a lot of stuff in here that we'll be able to take away from it, like, for example, a lot of conversation on advisory programs and making sure all students feel connected and so forth, and we'll be able to use that. So yeah, I mean, the short answer is absolutely, I definitely see this as something that's kind of the background of a lot of the conversation we're having. Again, I'm not surprised by anything that was in here, so it's, there's nothing that's startlingly different than what I expected to see, but there are some of those fairly specific nuanced components to programs that I just, I'd never thought about it that way, and having not been in our music program or not been in our life skills or home economics program, I wouldn't have that perspective, and so it's just helpful.
Could you talk to the board a little bit about when you plan on doing this again, and why?
We would like to do this on a bi-annual basis, so every two years, and the theory being that, you know, if you do it every year, the data, you're going to be going to the same well over and over and over again, and I think you need time to digest what you have, make some modifications, and then determine if, two years down the road, people are satisfied. So what I would be looking to do is probably in the spring of two thousand and fifteen, to come back to you and make the same request, can we, can we conduct this survey? At that point, it would probably be the class of two thousand and fourteen, which just graduated, and it'd be a year into their experience, and then the class of two thousand and eleven, which would be at the point of just finishing up their college experience. So that's kind of what I would like to do, is like, on every two years, conduct it. I believe the cost of the survey was four thousand dollars, and I think it's money well-spent because it does give us information that's helpful in kind of looking at the big picture of our program.
Thank you, Todd.
Yep. Thank you.
I'm wondering if the approval of the board, whether we could reverse the next two discussion items so that, because there are people here to discuss the Chinese after-school program, rather having them wait through a discussion not related to that, so...
Let me do an introduction. UC, if you want to bring your crew up to the podium. When I first arrived, Dennis Harrington and I sat down and talked about the Confucius Institute and their outreach to our school district and the Portsmouth School District. And you might recall that at that time, we had a lot on our plate, and so Dennis and I really just kind of said, we need to backburner this because we don't have the energy and the focus to give it due diligence. Recently, we had a parent group approach us about reigniting that conversation with the Confucius Institute, and it was something, again, that Dennis and I were receptive to because it was something that he had worked on with the World Language Group and something I had dealt with when I went to Beijing about six years ago. So the Confucius Institute is really a, an organization that is promoting Chinese language and culture, and what these parents are promoting is an after-school program at the elementary level with the sponsorship of the district. We would have to be the sponsors, we would have to apply for J-1 visa for a teacher from China to come in and do this program. I've done this before, it's a process, applying for the visa is a process. It's like the long form in an IRS document, and, but it's changed a little bit. When I did it five years ago, we had to do it for each school in the district. Now it's a district application, so that's an advantage. So, you know, what we're hoping is that the board would give conceptual support to the introduction of an after-school Chinese program, with the understanding, hopefully, that you would support Todd and I working with the Confucius Institute and J to bring in a program into the day program, offering Chinese as a language. Again, the Confucius Institute pays for the teacher, there's no cost to the district. The reason I would want to wait on the middle school and high school is it's a conversation Todd would have to have with the students so he could generate interest in J. But for tonight, what I really am looking for is your support to go forward with the math school program, and I'm going to invite UC and her parental support group to speak a little bit more about the issue. UC?
Thank you, Superintendent Boris. I had thought that this would be in the public comment forum, so we split it up between us, and while it's a little bit more disjointed, I also think that it will allow you to hear some of the diverse perspectives from our, from our community. We'll keep it short. So I'm UC Terrell, Stephen Zue in Durham. I have a son entering first grade, I'm a haremid, and a preschooler. And we're going to introduce you to some of the parents behind this initiative and also anticipate a few key questions beyond what you've seen in the reading. As you saw, our proposal introduces an after-school Chinese program for Oyster River Elementary students at no or low cost to the district and low cost to families. We're able to do this through a partnership with the Confucius Institute at UNH, which is a partnership between UNH and Chengdu University in Western China. UNH is one of over seventy universities in the United States, from Stanford to Stony Brook, that hosts a Confucius Institute. Before we go any further, I know there's been some sensitivity around proposed no-cost programs for the district, and I want to clarify what I think this means as a parent layperson. As Jim said, the Confucius Institute model globally is to pay for the full salary and instruction expenses of the instructors and the materials. This means whether for an after-school program or for a school-day program, the lion's share of expenses, the teacher salaries, and again, the materials are covered. We're not relying on fundraising, and even if the program changes form or adds a school-day component in the upper grades, the Chinese-language teachers through the Confucius Institute will not be, need to be paid by the district. When our group of local parents contacted UNH's Confucius Institute this spring to see if Oyster River could be a potential K-through-twelve partner, we learned that Dennis Harrington had actually submitted an application three years ago, which was accepted by the Chinese Ministry of Education. Unfortunately, as you may recall, two thousand and twelve was terrible timing for our district, and the partnership was put on backburner. In contrast, the Portsmouth School District, which also applied in two thousand and twelve, is now two years into its thriving. Chinese program will bring a second teacher this fall, again, all salaries and materials paid. So I know you have questions about the proposed model, where we are in our planning, the Confucius Institute's more broadly, and also the continuity of language instruction for children who might participate in this elementary after-school program. I'll field the first three of these and then let Josh take on the continuity question. So as you saw in your documents, the vision is for a two-day-per-week after-school program for elementary students. It will be held at a central location, likely at UNH. Students would bus from both elementary schools, as they do with the UNH gymnastics program or other programs. The lead teacher's salary and program materials would be paid fully by the Confucius Institute at no cost to the district. Also, UNH students studying Chinese or from China would volunteer with the program. Cost to families would be low, basically the cost of snacks and supplies, and provide a high-quality, accessible after-care option for working parents. The program would also include visits to regional Chinatowns, community workshops, and social events, helping parents to support their children in this complicated language, and also significantly celebrating our community's diversity through the active involvement of Chinese-speaking families, too. So that's the vision in a nutshell. Where are we in this planning process? Yige Wang, who is the Confucius Institute director, is in China tonight but wanted me to convey his enthusiasm for this after-school program, both for its own sake and also as a first step towards a deeper Oyster River partnership. We've also spoken with UNH Academic Affairs and the Office for International Students and Scholars about their desire to host a community program, especially those that engage UNH students. However, without the district's involvement, we haven't been able to commit to such details as specific location, supervisory structure, and quality assurances. We also don't have a contract from the Ministry of Education that has been adapted for an after-school program. These are critical components, but they need the school board's approval to begin to work through this, as Superintendent has suggested. So our approach, and we defer to you on the best approach, but would be to form a superintendent committee to name and also begin to address these administrative and program questions. quali- and program questions. If and when these are addressed to the committees and the superintendent satisfaction, the school board would be asked for final approval. I know the school board has set its priorities for the year ahead, but I hope that you consider that this is a potential partnership long in the making, that it's relatively simple, and that it doesn't reconfigure the, the school day, or have major budget implications, and that there is a passionate and diverse parent group behind it, as well as university stakeholders. I'd like to anticipate a final question that may arise in community discussions in response to recent articles about, about the political motivations of Confucius Institutes. We firmly believe that Chinese language and culture is different and distinct from the Chinese government and politics. Our experience with the UNH Confucius Institute, which is an independent negotiation, has been positive and open at all levels. And prior to becoming Confucius Institute Director, Yiga Wong actually worked in Portsmouth in their ESL program, and he and his wife live in Durham. We also have a Confucius Institute teacher in our midst right now, whose son Oscar is in kindergarten at Mastway. Oscar struggled with English at first, and the other children, by all accounts, rose to the occasion, helping him inside and outside the classroom, and building their empathy and their cross-cultural skills in the process. These are the same children as first graders could enroll in the after-school program next year, and in the future, Oscar's Chinese schoolmates could visit Oyster River, or their families could host our children in Chengdu through subsidized exchanges. So we believe this is a mind-opening, not a mind-closing opportunity. I'll pass the mic to Josh, and thank you for your consideration and support.
Thank you. I'm going to do my very best to convey less information and do it more slowly. I am actually an Oyster River grad, way back in '95, back in the area, and now have a rising first grader going into Moheramit, my daughter, my son's in pre-K. And I also taught Chinese for a year down at the Academy of the Pacific Rim when I got out of college, so I've got some experience with what a Chinese program in a school looks like. But in terms of continuity, what we're really looking for initially is kind of grades one through three, and that it keeps it small, the kids are close enough in age so that if we have different, even if we have different sort of natural abilities or starting places, they're close enough in age to socialize. The goal is to expand that to one through four, maybe even K through four, and at that point, we'd want to be able to differentiate kids of different ages and abilities into sort of different project groups or ability groups, because kindergartners and fourth graders are not going to socialize with each other very effectively. From there, based on community interest and growth, hopefully, we'd like to bring it into the middle school environment, hopefully as a, as a part of the school day, but if necessary, again, we, it could remain as an after-school program. Additional teachers for, from the Confucius Institute could be brought into, into the area to accommodate more students, and the end goal would be to add Chinese as an offered language in the high school program. I mean, when I was here once upon a time, there were three, Latin died, because nobody wanted to take it. Chinese is kind of a very large and growing language, it's the second biggest economy in the world right now, and it will pass America unless we do something drastic. So, it's only going to become more important, and all of our manufacturing is already there, so, kind of good if we can harlay our kids into being able to work with the rest of the world. So, it's kind of where I've got.
Thank you. Could you just introduce yourself, I'm sorry?
Oh yeah, so my name's Yan Hong, I work at the Spreig, which is a Portsmouth Spreig Energy Company, I'm an accountant. My husband works at UNH, Space Science Center, so we are a pure Chinese family, so here to share my experience. So it's such an honor to hear, to share my excitement of the idea of the after-school Chinese program. So for us, it's a, so I have two daughters, my older one, Daiya, she's at high school, freshman, so she kept it to US when she was three, so she can speak fluent Chinese. My younger one, she was born in Houston, and basically right now, she's losing her Chinese, all of her Chinese. So every time we were talking at her dinner table, we're speaking Chinese, she is totally like outsider of our family, she cannot get into our conversation because she cannot understand Chinese. And we struggled, we, we tried to push her to speak Chinese, but it's so hard, because most of the time, and she started her preschool like when she was one-year-old, so most of the time, she spent the time there at school, speaking English. When we get home, so we just do not have like enough time to teach her, and so, we think about like, it would be so beneficial for a Chinese community, for a Chinese family to have an after-school program, to learn, have a, have like, have this program to teach her to speak Chinese, and, and also get to know their Chinese culture, build her Chinese identity, and so it would be really beneficial for our family and also for other Chinese family. I'm very excited about this Chinese after-school program. It would be really hard, we, we thought about like maybe, we can, because here, there's no Chinese school, in the, in the bigger cities, in Boston, or in Houston, there's Chinese school, we can send our kids to a Chinese school, learn Chinese. We thought about maybe we can drive her all the way to Boston, like one and a half hour drive, one way to Boston, to take Chinese class, and then drive her back, that would be a three-hour drive for a weekend. We just like struggled really hard, tried to like, get her to learn the Chinese, and so, it would be a really beautiful program for us. Another thing is like, if we have this program, then my Maggie, my younger one Maggie, she can share her Chinese culture and with her friends, and so just communicate with our friends and get to involve with getting their community ties with our like culture, with our community. Basically, I hopeful, hopefully, I hope the board will approve this wonderful Chinese program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Jessie Jacobs, I'm from Mat Berry, and we've got four kids in the, in the district, three at Moheramit and one at PEP, he's going to come up to kindergarten in the fall. I just wanted to come tonight and show my support, put my support behind this amazing effort that these parents have taken on. I was very enthusiastic as soon as UC and I started talking about it, as soon as I learned of it, because it brought me back to where my oldest, Charlotte, who'll be moving up to the middle school next year, came from. When we moved up from Boston, she had her kindergarten year, which was full day, in Boston Public Schools, which, for some of us, maybe isn't something to write home about. I didn't, I didn't realize we'd been at the Pacific Rim. Needless to say, however, she actually had a wonderful one year in Boston Public Schools, her kindergarten experience was great. And then we moved up here, and she was delighted to arrive to Moheramit, wonderful community, Oyster River in general has a wonderful community. And after one week in first grade, when she went to Moheramit, she came, she came home, and she, something, she realized something. First she said, and pardon the expression, first thing she said was, "Mama, there's no dark-skinned children in my class." She was confused, because she was one of four white kids in her class in Boston. And then the next day, she, she said, "Mama, they don't teach Spanish or Mandarin at my school. Why?" And, oh, well, they start teaching foreign language down the road, and that's, I don't mean that as a criticism, I think I also added in, "It's New Hampshire." So, sorry. And then, you know, thinking what Madeleine Albright would say, I said, "Well, what are you going to do about it, Charlotte?" She wrote a letter to Obama, but she didn't know. But we do want to raise global contributing citizens here, and I think we do a great, I think I'm just amazed with the school district in all other respects, and I like how we're able to plug into the community resources that we have in this group, and UC, and the Confucius Institute is clearly one of them, I mean based on everything we've heard tonight presented. And I'd like to add that, you know, the community itself, Durham, I know has a growing, I believe, population of Chinese families, and we really need to take, you know, tap into that, that wonderful community asset that we have. There's a lot of cultural exchange and sharing that I, that I think we can all benefit from, but from the global perspective, I think it's just a smart way to go if you're, you know, in the middle of building a stronger language program in the school district. Clearly Chinese is a very, it's, it's worth, considering it's worth exploring, I can't emphasize that enough. Any of my cousins or friends who live in New York, or Boston, or West Coast, it's a very, almost taken for granted that it's, it's a language that our kids need to be considering for the future, given the global marketplace. It's low cost, it's not going to cost us much of anything, we have a volunteer base that's, that's really throwing all of their weight behind this, that I think is going to result in something that's sustainable, and that we can see grow and flourish in our middle schools, and eventually in our high school. In terms of other points that, that I want to add, I think everybody's touched on everything from a more personal perspective, I have numerous friends who are very interested in seeing Chinese coming to the language program, languages at the elementary school level, which Dennis has done a great job advocating for, and doing with One World. But, you know, I think that we have to have something that's a little more accessible as well, for all, all families, and low cost, if not free, is a wonderful way to do it. But that's, I just wanted to put my, my support behind this effort, and I do hope that you explore it and consider it. Thank you.
I just have one question, what kind of authorization would you suggest to move forward? You have a suggestion about the kind of authorization, because we've talked about middle school, we've talked about forming a committee, you know?
Yeah, so, you know, I would want the board's support to form a superintendent's committee. I would ask the board to support the concept behind the elementary after-school program, so that I can work through the specifics of the program, as UC had suggested, but also the authority to apply for the J-1 visa. I need the board's support on record, because the federal government's going to look for that. So in the minutes, I would have to reflect that the board supports the creation of the after-school program, and the application for a J-1 visa, and then I'll form the superintendent's committee as a result.
I have a question, so financially, our, the school's commitment mainly is a bus from Mastway, a bus from Moheramit twice a week, right? It's a one-way trip. And then the second question I have is, so what, how many students do you think you can accommodate?
Maximum.
Yeah.
I would want to understand more about the, what they've done in other classrooms. My sense is because we have a leveraged model, where I envision a lead instructor, and Yiga does as well, a lead instructor, but with, say, three advanced Chinese students who are receiving course credit, which is something that he's looking into, to maintain their motivation, serving as deputy instructors, managing a rotating group of students, as Josh did when he was at Hamilton, volunteering in Chinese. So because you have this structure where you could have the lead teacher teaching more of the skills, and the students running the, the activities, that sort of thing, I mean, I, just off the top of my head, I would say 30, which honestly, I think is more than we would probably get in that, in this first year, and would be nevertheless an indication of, of where we might grow. We could, if we, you know, if we were blessed with 80, we could split into a Monday, Wednesday, and Tuesday, Thursday, or it's possible that some students won't want to come two days a week, and will just be coming for one. That's, I mean, you, as, as educators or those working in education have a better sense of that, but that's the numbers that we've been thinking of.
I have a few questions. I don't have any experience with a typical Chinese teaching style. I'm assuming that, and this is an assumption, is different from an elementary American teaching style. We're talking, it sounds like we're talking about a very broad range of student ability, with some children coming in from Chinese-speaking homes, and some children coming from New Hampshire. And, and so I guess my question is, with a very heterogeneous teaching style, or very heterogeneous, no, very diverse group of kids, and potentially, potentially a not very heterogenously, I don't know how to word it, not, a more traditional teaching style, is it more traditional? Does anyone go to school in China? I mean, what, what would we expect of a no-Confucius teacher?
I think we have to realize, these, the teachers are, and, you know, again, I'm sorry Yiga couldn't be here, he's flying back tomorrow, but the, the Confucius Institute model is to send teachers abroad. You know, it's not to create little Chinas in, in a classroom.
And that's not my concern, my concern is can they, can they handle the broad ability level that, and you seem to, yes.
Yes. The answer would be yes, as a former Chinese student.
Excuse me, could you come up to me?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Lyann, please do this as well.
The answer generally is going to be.
I'm sorry, could you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, Lila Jenkins, I happen to be married to that one. Just to let you guys know, I was born and raised in New York City, so I grew up through the public school system there, and now we live here solely because of Josh. He speaks really highly of the Oyster River School District, but just in general, everything that I've heard tonight, everything that you've said about the high school and all that, I can tell you guys that you guys are doing an amazing job. You will be so well-prepared for college, because I met Josh in college, and it was always, this is what you're supposed to learn when you go to a school, where you have an education, you know, versus what I had, so you guys are doing a tremendous job. Kudos to each and every one of you. But in regards to your question, in general, everybody's going to be on a different level, so it'll always be catered to the individual's level set. So initially, I mean, I have two kids, my daughter will be entering Moheramit in the fall, and my son is in preschool, not pre-K, but she barely speaks Chinese, she's pretty much like Maggie, she just happens to be half Asian, but it'll be, at her level set, she'll be starting at ground zero. There might be a few students that speak Chinese at home already, but for the most part, it, they're pretty much all similar. Unfortunately, I don't know if I should say unfortunately, but because we're all in the Oyster River School District, no matter how much we want our kids to speak Chinese, they don't. They go to school in English, we read in English, we watch television in English, everything is English for them. I try so hard to get my kids to speak Chinese, they don't. I, at the end of the day, I keep speaking to Chi- them in Chinese, and they keep answering me in English. So ultimately, it's no different. My daughter speaks, her Chinese is as good as any one of your kids, so I wouldn't worry too much about that, and there is tremendous support from the community, from all aspects, both Caucasian and, I mean, both Asian and non-Asian families, where, and at UNH, this Chinese student population, I mean, people are thrilled that people want to learn about Chinese, both language and culture. There will be so much support, and the best part is, it won't cost us anything. Everybody wants to volunteer and just wants to educate people about this, it's a great cultural exchange. So, from my perspective, I hope it gets approved, because we all win. Everybody, at the end of the day, gets this fantastic experience, and it doesn't cost us anything other than time, so.
Thank you.
I, another question, back to Al's cost, so the busing would be two buses, two times a week, are we talking a hundred dollars, a couple hundred, not, not big money, right? I mean, for a year?
Well, let's see, you're probably talking at the most 10 miles, at a buck and a half a mile, so, pretty nominal.
What about this piece? It's a district program. If a child who has a one-on-one aide in class wants to take this program, does that child get an aide, and does the district pay for that aide?
Well, we currently have a number of after-school programs, we have the math-science program that we started at the elementary school this year, and that's expanding into the Mastway School. And typically, after-school programs don't involve specialized support, but if there was a student that Catherine, in her determination, decided needed that support.
Right.
Then we would provide, because we would provide that support for that student in any other capacity. So, it's, it's, it's really, it will be based on a child's IEP, and whether Catherine and her staff feel like that is a necessity for that child to learn, and if they say it is, then we will. But normally, it's not, because after-school programs aren't usually as intense as day programs. programs. And what the model that Yussi just described is a, a teacher and three support people, so it probably will be able to, we'll probably be able to deal with the child's needs with that kind of staffing. But if not, Catherine will step in, and she'll say, Jim, we need to support this child if they want to do it.
At what cost?
At whatever cost, you know, the hour for the, the paraprofessional. But that's going to be the exception, not the rule. I mean, when we say nominal cost, it's going to be a nominal cost in both.
Denise?
I just, could you explain a little bit more about what Portsmouth is currently doing? Is it, it sounds like they did not start as an after-school.
That's right.
Can, could you just explain just a, a little bit about how they did that?
Did you look into them? Did you reach out yet? No. Okay, so my understanding, um, is that they started with the high school, and that they started offering an in-school high school program, and that it was successful, and that they've brought it back into the middle school with a second teacher, again in school.
And the initial proposal from two years ago was a high school, middle school program. Uh, and again, just because of timing, at that point in time, there was no way we could handle that initiative. So I think this is a more appropriate initiative for our time, and then building up to a program that's included in our, our regular program.
I have just one question, because, you know, this is a logistic one that you guys are going to have to work out, but would you stagger those two days then? Because this, that science and math thing is, was really popular, and, and there may be kids that were born a trans, you know, also do the science and the foreign language, because, you know, I know what parents are like here. And it's like, so, uh, so would you stagger it, so that the kid would have an opportunity to...
Are you referring to the Science Friday program?
Yeah, so I mean, someone would have an opportunity, I mean, I'm just saying, I don't want you to have it at the same time, potentially, and have that, but...
Oh, I know. You know, as, as a parent who's just entering the first-grade world, um, there, there seem to be such a wealth of after-school programs. I, I think, oh, we, we need to avoid Monday because it's Coyote Club. Well, you know, we, we need to find a...
Yeah, that's something to work on.
Right.
If there are other questions, I'd like to make a...
Maria, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say that I will support this program, but as a dyslexic person, I also make a plea that there be support for those kids that have reading problems, because it wasn't until I got, uh, a major in U.S. history, because I thought Swedes should know some U.S. history at UNH. But then I took a course in, uh, I think it was Chinese history, and I decided, okay, you're dyslexic, this can't be done. So I went on to get my master's degree in reading education, being the only non-English-speaking, non-reading, reading specialist at Swat, right at UNH.
Makes a lot of sense, this year.
It does make lots of sense, but the Oriental languages don't have the, you know, familiarity, like even as a Swede studying English, you know, we're Londoners, you know, we're, it's very, very difficult to, to do that. So for those kids, for the rest of the dyslexic community, few that speak up and say, hey, I'm one of those, I want to make the plea that that's taken into consideration.
Absolutely.
So I just want to be clear about the motion.
Yep.
You're asking for a committee to be authorized approval of the concept of after-school program in Chinese for the elementary school.
And, and the authority to apply for the J-1 visa. I can, I can create the superintendent's advisory committee, because it's a superintendent's committee without board authority.
So you don't need that, you don't, that doesn't need to be part of the motion?
Correct. If I were, we were creating a board committee, I would, but we're not. So we're requesting authority to create an after-school program in support to apply for the J-1 visa.
Okay. Kenny?
I would like to move that, I could speak to it after, there's a second.
Okay, so move to, to support an after-school program in Chinese and to seek the J-1 visa. That's the motion, okay? The move by Kenny, seconded by Al. You want to speak to it?
I, um, I think this is a, a great opportunity to start to advance foreign language in our district, and as my broken record at the board table, it's something that I support. And I, I like the way this, it, it has a feel of organically growing. I like starting with the elementary schools. By doing that, we'll see if there really is interest. I think there'll be a lot of interest, and then I think we'll be able to grow it into our district as those kids, um, move through our school. And I think it's, um, certainly nothing comes for free, and, um, you probably can find things to pick out with this program, but I think the overall benefit and the, the lack of a significant cost to our district is just a tremendous win for our school system and residents of our community, so I'd like to see this go forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have to agree. I think it's kind of interesting that we've had, like, this Sci-5 Friday thing come up, and, and also this Chinese, and I like the model, because, you know, with minimal risk, it gives you a little bit of time to build the program out, so you can find out where your difficulties and challenges are. And it, it does provide an alternative for kids in terms of language to work out, so I like that. Just, as an aside, what Maria was saying about, like, the dyslexic thing, if you had seen me trying to hail a cab in Beijing, trust me, it goes far beyond dyslexia in my book. So I just think it's a great program and a great opportunity, and it, it hopefully provides a template for our, you know, growing languages in our, in our district.
I guess my, that's my concern, the template. I support the after-school program, but I'd like to see it push on to an in, in-house, if that's the word, program, so that, as an elective, because I think it's one thing for interested parents of elementary schools to cart their kids over to a, a program, but it's a whole different thing for middle schoolers and high schools, schoolers to sign up for an elective. And I think that interest is there, and we ought to kind of push it in that direction.
I'm very excited about language. I lived a lot, I grew up going to school in France, Switzerland, actually, and so went to a French-speaking school when I was three. I do have some concerns, uh, that I want to voice. Um, one is, you were talking about the template, I, I, I worry that we're gonna get in a point, and I, I think, the way the motion is worded, I think we're okay. I, we haven't had the discussion as a district that this is the language that we want to broaden our program with. And, and it may very well be. I, I was saying today that I, before, I would have thought that Spanish and French, easily, but I saw the information on this sheet, and I found it very compelling as to why Chinese may, may be the language that we should broaden with. But I, but I am concerned that we have not had that conversation as a district, that we have not had that conversation, um, about is this the language that we want for this district? So that's one issue. I think we're okay with the motion we have, but going forward, that concerns me. And, and money always concerns me. And, and, it always concerns me. And I, again, I, I, I love the idea of broadening our language program, but I am concerned that we have other programs that we are broadening as well. Um, we have, you know, being on the technology committee, we have technology positions that we really want to see come into place, and I can tell you, as all of us, as taxpayers, I am very concerned about the timing of the broadening of the program. Um, you know, so, so do I maybe see this as an after-school program for a number of years, and growing this as an after-school program? And then in five years, talking about bringing it in at, at the other levels, yes, and I will not be on the board at that time, so. But...
Don't be premature on that.
But with, with my concerns, I think, um, those are my concerns, my last concern, and this is speaking as a teacher, I think we need to be really aware that those UNH students that are Chinese students, or Chinese-speaking students, that's what they are. They're not teachers, necessarily. You may find some that are excellent teachers, um, but I hope, and I would assume, that there will be some checks and balances to make sure that if there is a, a student who, although they're Chinese, is phenomenal, is not phenomenal with elementary school kids, that we would make a modification there. So with those concerns, I, I will support the program, because I am okay with the motion the way that it is.
Will you?
We've had a motion already?
We've had a motion, or a discussion.
Because I just had one more question.
Sure.
Being not just dyslexic, but clueless. And it's my understanding that there is more than one language in China, Chinese. If this talks about Chinese, is it Mandarin? Is it the Cantonese?
Mandarin.
Mandarin. Thank you.
Kenny?
Hey, um, just to maybe try to, um, answer or respond to some of the things you said. The way I look at it is that this will not preclude other languages. We're not signing on to hiring teachers, cut teacher contracts, teachers locked in. This is a program that will be growing. Our feeding children into the program, our providing transportation and some support if needed, but it really doesn't preclude that other piece. And as far as the, and I think that ties into how I would see this growing. Currently, we have language, if I get it correctly, starting in seventh grade. So seventh and eighth grade, we have language during the school day. That could be where the Chinese becomes part of in-school, talking to at Al's, and those teachers are provided free. The problem, I think at fifth and sixth grade, that becomes the problem area, that we don't have language, and I think it would have to stay as an after-school program, fifth and sixth, because there isn't that niche in the day, um, to, to incorporate that. So I think that those two factors, I think are there. And I agree with you, what you say about teaching, and again, I think we'll find if it works or not. If people aren't happy, I think the kids that are going there aren't going to continue to go there. So I think people are going to vote with their, with their feet and what they do with their children, but this makes two cents.
Other, other comments? Okay, so the motion is to approve the creation of an after-school, um, Chinese program in, in conjunction with the Confucius Institute.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and UNH.
And, and UNH.
Is it, or, or do you want it to explore? Is it, are you still in the, I thought you were in the exploratory thing.
I believe to support the concept.
Yes, so it's the concept.
Superintendent Morris' original wording.
And then as we figure out the particulars, we'll come back and share those particulars with you.
Okay.
And also the application for the J-1 visa, I'll give that in a minute.
Okay. So let's just, let's just read the motion then.
Kenny, I want to move to support the concept of the creation of a Chinese after-school program, including seeking J-1 visa, seconded by Al Howan.
Okay, so that's the motion. Read it up. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, Suen Rep in favor.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we return to questions you've been dealing with for a couple meetings, and that is, that there is additional, appears that there is additional money, or maybe additional money for perhaps one more project, and two of the possibilities that we've discussed previously were, um, the remote television. It seems like we're pulling the...
Resurfacing shouldn't have been there.
Okay. We've heard some information about the remote television. There's also another possibility that I would like to put forward, since we've already approved the new floor for Mohairat as part of the reconstruction, and we've approved it in, in concept that the floor for the Mastway, we're going to have to equalize that, but there's, whether, whether if there's additional money that we approve, instead of approving at this point the remote television, approve the, use that money for the Mastway gym floor, so that it doesn't have to be put in a previous budget, that, you know, that that money's committed now. So that would be a possibility. Yeah, Denise?
What was the cost, though, for, because, and again, knowing that Mohairat is part of a construction, I'm wondering if the cost would be different when we're talking about Mastway, because it's not part of a construction project?
Thank you, Denise. There, there would be no difference, because the cost of the flooring is being, is not discounted because of the construction project, and there's five square feet difference between the two gym floors. So, um, it's, it would be approximately $40,000.
Okay.
Maybe we'd get a discount, because we're buying two.
So what I want to say is, like, starting off with, when you look at the two projects, and, and the remote television, it's like, it's the, I'm going to call it the lure of technology, because you, you look at it, and you're like, you can think of a million ways you could use this television, but when you really look at the proposal, we don't really have how we actually are going to use it. So, um, since we, in our goals, asked for a technology plan to be put forth in the, in the fall, it seems to me like the, the television, remote television should go in that technology plan, and that way you can fully formulate not just what the equipment was, but who's going to, how's it going to be used? Is it, you know, just here at the high school? Is it the technology person over at the middle school? How is the staffing matching up exactly with this technology that we're integrating it? And my biggest question is, how are, how are kids getting their hands on it? How is this impacting students directly? So I think there's still questions to be asked, and we put in place something that would answer it, and it would seem natural that it could come into the budget process in the fall. The flooring, we're, you know, again, we've said that there's a direct reason why we want a specific flooring for one school. It doesn't seem to me to make sense to say, well, let's put it off for the other school till, at the very least, next summer, when the money is, is, you know, is there. So it would be, I think, a better idea, as Tom said, just to approve the flooring and have it done, and it, both would be done, and the kids, we know 290 kids are going to use that floor multiple times a week, you know, so there's no question about student use of it, so it'd be just, I think, a, a more appropriate way to handle this is to approve the Mastway flooring.
Kenny, and then Denise?
So before the, our concept of using it for the floor came up, I, we've had weeks to think about the television, and, and weeks to reflect really on this process, and, and hearing what different board members have said at prior meetings, and, and I'm trying, I, for myself, I was trying to formulate some sort of concept, or some sort of design of what we do with spending. And I was not going to support the television, not because I think it's a good thing or not, but the way I'm working to formulate, and I just want to throw it to board people for them to think, is that we prepare a budget, and we put in the budget what we think is important, and we take that budget to the community, and the community votes on that budget. We have money left over. I think it's okay if there's really a pressing need to utilize that money, or if there's really a common sense use of that money, where if we wait, it's actually going to cost the district more in the long run. A boiler goes, I think we replace it, um, for the opportunity, let's say, to do the construction of Mohairat. But I think when it's elective things, like the television, and I'm kind of sorry I voted for the tractor, because I see that as elective, and I'm thinking, that money we should return, and if it's important, we should put it in the budget, because this wasn't in our budget, and just because there's leftover, I think we should really not spend it easily. We should really, really be hard-pressed and make a really big case to spend it. So saying that, that's a philosophy, and I think the gym floor falls into one of those things, is we need to do it. What, you know, in this next year, if there's an injury at Mastway that might have been prevented, because we didn't have that floor, that I don't, that doesn't sit well with me as a board member. And I'm sorry, that moves it into that other category.
Denise, then Al.
Um, the question that I have is that for Mohairat, the gym is essentially now going to be separate from the cafeteria. But at Mastway, isn't that space also being used as part of the cafeteria, or is that a separate, that is a separate space as well? Okay, that, all right, that's, that answers my question then, okay.
So, so my, actually, I was just kind of responding to Kenny, I think that's why in the fall, we want a... I think that's why, in the fall, we want a solid capital improvement plan, so that when we, when we do the budget, you can look at it and say, well, you know, we've tackled these things on our $3 million of outstanding stuff, but the public has a clear idea of what is left as you move down the list. So that, when we're formulating the budget, we would really, in essence, be upfront with the public, saying, if we have extra money, you know, here's a prioritized list of what we're looking at, and it's important to fix these. Our priority with money is to fix these. So that way, it would, it would kind of eliminate this surprise factor, where suddenly a list appears out of nowhere. You don't really have a clear idea where they stand on the list of priorities, or exactly how long that list of, of capital improvement really is. Because I think when people see that, they realize, well, you know, giving me back this money and then asking me for the money again in a couple of months doesn't really make a lot of sense. It's like, you know, if you do have outstanding pressing needs, where are you spending it and how are you cutting that down? So I hope that there is more of a method that we do this in the fall.
I think that'll be good.
Just a question on the resurfacing projects that was, that were pulled. What were they?
It was the central office resurfacing.
Oh. What about the hole at Masway, where we have to go to town meeting and wait for that one foot of water?
You're going to get a proposal. It's going to run someplace in the $150,000 to $200,000. In fact, it's not a hole, it's a whole drainage system that has to be created. That'll be proposed in the new budget.
Okay. So one more town, town meeting.
So bring your buckets.
And I would say that we're working in junction with the neighboring church, and it's a very cooperative venture, and people, I think, have their head around trying to get it fixed. You have a serious issue about directing drainage in that area, and so we have to work with our neighbor to fix it. We can't do it by ourselves.
Okay. Thank you.
Maria?
I have a procedural question. As the gym floor is not on the agenda, is it a problem that we shift it there?
It's not, because you always reserve the right to take action on any item that's not on the agenda. It's right on your agenda.
Look, not that that's too good to be true.
So there's no motion. If somebody wants to make a motion.
I'll make a motion for a new gym floor for Masway Elementary School. That is the same type of floor as Moharmit.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Al. Further discussion on this? Hearing none?
No, 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 no. I'm not going to support this, for the same reason I did not support it at Moharmit. And I also am not going to support, because I have not, from talking with people in the schools, have not been convinced that, that it's really a safety necessity. But the other pieces that I haven't, and this is going to, this is the piece that I really want to bring up, because I have an issue with this equity piece, and that, that we're putting sort of a measuring stick up to different things and making this equal, but not necessarily making this equal. And so I, I think, and I've talked to a number of Masway staff and families, and said, if you had $40,000 to spend at Masway, is this where you would put it? And the answer was almost, it was very high no. So I'm going to vote no.
Other comments? Okay, read the vote. All those in favor of the motion? The motion is to approve the resurfacing of the Masway, the new gym floor for Masway, equivalent to the gym floor at Moharmit. Is that, okay? All those in favor, please raise your hands. Five in favor, student rep in favor. All those opposed? Two opposed. Motion passes. We have to affirm the hiring of three teachers and the assistant principal.
Right.
My understanding is these, this has already gone forward, we're referring to an action that we've authorized you to.
So typically, you are approving, but you gave the authority at the last meeting to act in your stead. So I also said that I would still go through the process, so that you can see staff member that was hired, their credentials, and the salary differential. So I want to add two names, in addition to the two names that you had in relation to nominees tonight. So I want to add Mark Milliken. Mark is an English teacher at Salem High School. He actually has a history in the district. He worked at Moharmit School. And he came through the staffing interview process with strong support from the Oyster River High School staff, and Todd Allen's support. I met with Mark, very, very impressed. You can see that his salary would be $81,000. He's replacing Sarah Watten, who makes $88,264. So we continue to have a positive differential as we bring in new staff. The second person that wasn't part of the original package is Andrea Lawrence, as a middle school science person. She's replacing Stephanie Ward. Stephanie's salary was $78,129, and Andrea comes in at $53,000. She is a, she was a top candidate in the selection process. Jay Rashad uses a pretty unique interview process, which, you know, I think we should be considering perhaps as a district concept. He actually has candidates teach in front of peers and in front of students, and the students get a say in the review of the candidate, which is, I think, really powerful. And so I'm very honored to put those names in front of you, as well as the candidates that were in your packet. And I'll open that up now, so I can read that. So just give me a second, I've got to get to that page.
Paul, you're getting there. Do you know where Andrea Lawrence is coming from? It's not, not specified.
All right, I'm sorry, Kenny. I do not know off the top of my head. Yep, Lisa. Hallback is a candidate for the high school math position, and Lisa came to us very highly recommended. She is experienced as a teacher in a wide range of courses, and her colleagues described her as very engaging, and students felt that she was extremely well-liked by both students and parents. So again, you know, going through Todd's process, he's got his staff engaged, and Lisa came through very highly recommended by both the staff and Todd. She's not necessarily replacing a student, a current person. Actually, she should be, but I don't know why that's blank, because we have a salary. In any case, there's a $20,000 salary differential. The salary of the position that was budgeted was $79,578, and the salary that Lisa would get would be $59,953. And the last.
It'd be Dave Nichols, right?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah. What?
Mary Kishbaugh. Mary Kishbaugh, okay. Mary Kishbaugh, thank you, Todd, I appreciate that. And then we have Chris Kearney, as a high school math person, unusual for Oyster River. Chris is brand-new out of the teacher factory, and so every once in a while, we do bring in somebody who hasn't experience. The current department chair said he was the first person hired in Oyster River with no experience, and that was 25 years ago, so it's not very frequently we do this. But Chris did a great job in the interview process. The teachers thought he would make a great addition to the faculty, and Todd has as well. Just in terms of closing, I meet with all the candidates, and so I get to know them just, you know, with, with the 30 minutes, just kind of get a sense of how the staff did, and why Todd was so enthusiastic. And so this young man will make a great addition to our staff. The amount budgeted for the position is $57,720, and Chris's salary would be $39,138. So, so far in the hiring process, the principals have done a really good job of replacing senior staff with less costly staff. That won't happen every single time, so I just want to, you know, remember, it's about the candidate in the position, and it wouldn't surprise me at some point those numbers reverse. But overall, the trend has been very positive, and the teachers and the principals have done a really great job of, of selection process, and I nominate all these people to you enthusiastically, or for, ask for your affirmation in the hiring of these people enthusiastically.
I just have one question before I do the motion. So how, have we hired everybody, or where, where are we?
No, no. Actually, we've done really good. Of course, we didn't have any classroom teachers at the elementary, so we were solid there. Catherine is still hiring special ed staff. Todd still has a part-time science person. Dennis, you have an opening now?
Well, I have the maternity leave.
Oh, the maternity leave. I was thinking full-time people. But thank you. So we're, we've done a really good job. A couple of positions closed Friday, the fifth-grade positions at the middle school. I think Catherine's position's closed Friday as well. Is that right, Catherine?
Uh, last week.
Last week. So she's at the beginnings, in beginning stages of the interview process, so we've done really well, Al. I would say that we've had some really incredible applications, too, and a large number of applications, even in areas like math, where you don't get tons of applications. We've got some really, we got a lot of applications, and that gave Todd and his staff the chance to be really selective in terms of who they wanted to hire.
Denise?
What about the tech ed person at the middle school?
Advertised, and so that closes on Friday as well.
Okay.
Any questions? Maria?
I have a question. With this being a district that doesn't often hire those first-year teachers, Todd, I know you have a mentoring program, and are you going to, like, just beef that up for this first-year guy? Do we really want to?
Well, actually, we have a very unusual situation. We were, we've got lots of new staff, so yeah, absolutely, we're going to do a lot of conversation around making sure we're providing the adequate supports, yeah. When the math department made the decision to choose these people, that was one of the big topics of conversation. Could we handle all of these, these dynamics? And we feel very confident we can, but yes, there will be mentorship and a whole mentor program going. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the two math teachers, the assistant principal, and the middle school science teacher.
Do you want to affirm?
To affirm.
To affirm. Moved by Al. Seconded by Kenny. Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in the affirmative, student rep in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Committee updates? Hearing none? Okay.
Maria, do you want to talk about policy?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. Yes, we did meet. We did meet. We worked hard. And did not complete any of our projects, one, which was the concussion head injury policy, which.
Basically, the policies have worked on, we were, we sent back to ourselves.
I think one thing I think to share with the board is the policy of class size was being considered, and Denise, I think, made this suggestion, and I think it was highly endorsed by all of us, that that's such a big issue, that we felt that that really was best to come to the board table for discussion, rather than just the policy committee writing that policy. So in upcoming meeting, maybe during the summer, that will be on our agenda.
We also discussed that maybe even the board is not big enough to do this, and that we should have some kind of public input forum, whatever, because this really is a big one.
Other committee updates? Public comment? No public comment. Where's Dean?
He had a party.
He had a party.
He's with the blue lines.
Okay, closing actions, future meeting dates, the, Maria?
On closing actions, I've talked to you about the issue that I would like to see put on a future agenda, and that is for us to discuss, and hopefully accept a comparison group. I was really surprised when we did the administrators' contracts, that principals were compared to one group, and the assistant superintendent to another group of, so I would like to see us have, this is what we feel are compatible. And then I would like to see us also take a few measures to compare how we're doing. This year, it's the kneecap, but I hate to put all eggs in one basket, so kneecap plus SAT scores, so kneecaps, SAT score, graduation rate.
Pick 'em.
Something like that, and then decide on that, because, as I told Tom, I paid $11,000 in taxes, so I'm a shareholder in this here operation, and I think shareholders should get to know exactly how things are going.
I think, I think that's an excellent idea, because I think sometimes when you say, okay, here's, here's the state average, and here's where we are, that doesn't necessarily answer the question that we might want to ask, is like, in comparable communities, they're spending a comparable amount of money, how do we, how do we measure up? So that kind of, I assume that's the kind of comparison you're talking about, you know?
Right.
And I think, I think we could, we could identify six or seven school districts that, you know, Salhegan, you know, Hollis Brookline, you know. And like, and what Kenny said about comparing the graduations survey with comparable school districts, that makes, that makes wise. Yeah.
I just have a, and I agree with Maria. It's kind of like an academic State of the Union, is what you're, I think you're asking for. Do we do that, like, didn't we publish that, though, when we do the deliberative session?
In the annual report.
In the annual report, something like that, if we could get, like, I mean, again, I agree with Maria. I think it's a really good idea to have kind of a academic State of the Union, and I would really love it if we could have it come, and when we're moving into the budget cycle, it'd be great.
We can do that. It's all doable.
Okay. Question? So regular meeting on the 16th, and then manifest meeting on the 9th of, 9th of July?
Do we have to approve the revised calendar with our meeting dates changed?
It's always nice if you do that, you know, it makes a public notice, so if you want to make a motion like that, Ken, that would be great.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept the revised school board meeting dates. It's revised as of June 17, 2014, and for the public, the change is that there will no longer be a manifest meeting on August 27, and the full school board meeting will be on August 20, rather than August 13. So the motion is to accept the revised school board meeting calendar.
Moved by Kenny. Seconded by Denise. I mean, seconded, okay.
Who's seconded? With any luck, I'll be in Harpers Ferry, West Virginia, on my bike on April 20th, or on August 20th, so.
So we're not talking motorcycle, then, huh?
I'm talking my bicycle.
Who seconded that? Who seconded Kenny's motion?
I did.
Okay, thanks, Denise.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, with sadness that Al won't get one of those meetings, so can you have a show of hands in favor of the motion? Seven in favor, student rep in favor.
You can always call in from Harpers Ferry.
I don't know what the sun condition is like there.
Could we have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Moved by Maria. Seconded by Al. All those in favor?
Yes.
Seven in favor, student rep in favor. Meeting is adjourned.
Al, where, where's, where's Harpers Ferry?